I call the Tuesday, November 14, 2017 work session meeting of the Portsmouth City Council on the matter of clerk, will you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
This is Lucas Burr?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons? Dr. Whitaker?
Roseau.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. And before we get into the agenda, I think it's appropriate to recognize the fact that we have a vice, not vice mayor, but city treasurer-elect. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Dr. Pat?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I'd like to make an introduction this evening. I'm honored to introduce Dr. Lauren James as the new Director of Portsmouth City Health District. Dr. Lauren James is committed to expanding the capabilities and services of the Health Department to promote a healthy and environmental safe community. As a citizen and native of Portsmouth, Virginia, Dr. James has dedicated her career to providing quality health care to residents through community partnerships and programs. Dr. James will use her leadership to increase awareness for a healthier Portsmouth. Dr. James was a licensed family medical physician, she is a licensed federal family medical physician in the Commonwealth of Virginia with experience in both clinics and hospitals. Dr. James was most recently the supervising physician at Bon Secours Medical Associates in Portsmouth, Virginia. In addition to her role as supervising physician, she served as the medical director of the Mirrevue Medical Foundation Clinic. Dr. James completed her residency at Easton Virginia Medical School where her advocacy for public health began. During that time, she participated in the EVMS Public Health Leadership Certificate Program. Dr. James has also made a conscious effort to provide her medical services abroad, participating in medical mission trips in South Africa, Nicaragua, and Peru. Dr. James earned her Doctor of Medicine from Morehouse School of Medicine and holds a Bachelor's Degree in Chemistry from Spelman College. Please join me in welcoming Dr. Lauren James.
Would you mind coming to the microphone, please?
Well, thank you, everyone, for allowing me to come say hi. This is just an awesome opportunity. I'm just so proud of Portsmouth. I'm proud to be from Portsmouth, and I just see great things for our city, and I just look forward to working with our City Council and our manager and our mayor, and I mean, I just, I love Portsmouth. So, once again, thank you for letting me say hello.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add, Mayor, that Lauren James is the daughter of Delegate Matthew James and Attorney Karen James, who is the attorney for PRAJ. In addition, she is a graduate of I.C. Norfolk High School. During tonight's public work session, we have two presentations. The first presentation, Mr. Ken McDonald will provide a 2017 season review of the Portsmouth Pavilion at Harbor Center, a season that extends from April through December 2017, and he will provide direction for the 2018 season. Mr. McDonald, the president of Integrated Management Group, LLC, I'm Going, he has successfully managed and operated the city's entertainment venue at Harbor Center since December 2005. Under his management, the Portsmouth Pavilion has seen a plethora of events, activities, and national performing acts for virtually every music genre throughout the country. In June 27, Vier Magazine named the Portsmouth Pavilion Lionel Richie Concert as the number one summer concert in all of Hampton Roads. The second presentation, Ms. Barbara Willis, Chief Executive Officer of the Hampton Roads Community Health Center, will present an overview of the agency. Ms. Willis has 35 years of prior experience developing health benefit programs, including a provider of network development, hospital marketing, and coalition building. She has worked in both public and private sectors. The Health Center is a vital provider of health services to our citizens in our city and other citizens in cities across Hampton Roads. We will begin with Mr. Ken McDonald.
Manager, thank you for the very kind introduction. Mayor, Vice Mayor, appreciate the opportunity to be here to speak to you about 2017 and talk a little bit about the business I'm in, which is show business. And we all get to see and participate in the show part of it. Now, we'll talk a little bit about the business part of it. In fact, there's more letters in business than in show, and there's a reason for that because there is a big piece of the business that's behind this. Total contributions to the City of Portsmouth in 2017, as you can see from your handout, in rent and taxes is $189,000. Total attendance, right around $70,000. In addition to the taxes shown here, which we break out separately, there is about another $25,000 to $30,000 in sales and meal tax. And I'm only referring to the sales tax that stays with the city, not the portion that goes, that flows through the state. Meal tax is significant. For those that are not aware, it's in Hampton Roads, and most of the cities have a 10% admission tax. So, 10% of every ticket we sell goes to the City of Portsmouth, and that makes up the lion's share of the payment. Now, what's always important to think about when it comes to the contribution to the city is the numbers we're putting up here are direct revenue. The good thing about entertainment facilities, and why many cities have conversations about arenas, theaters, sports halls, whatever, is the economic impact of them. We have not done a full economic impact on Portsmouth Pavilion. It's a conversation that we should have to get an assessment on what's happening there, but if, as you know, economic impact is going to be the feedback we get on restaurants, on gas stations, on convenience stores, on people going out to buy new shoes for an upcoming show, anything that goes into the show, the wages that we pay to the people that work the shows, and et cetera. So, the impact of the Pavilion goes way beyond the direct revenue to the city. This chart here is, shows the demographic of the ticket buyers. It's slightly skewed because it's the demographics of the ticket buyers. So, if mom buys the ticket for Junior, we're gathering mom's data. So, it will push generally, it'll push the numbers up a little bit. But what we're seeing is, what we like to see, is a broad spectrum, that we're hitting all age groups, we're hitting all income groups. Also, where are buyers coming from? It's pretty much a reflection of Hampton Roads, and there are sales outside of Hampton Roads. We see Richmond visitors, and up the peninsula, we see Eastern Shore, we see the Carolinas a little bit, but it's pretty much a reflection of our population. So, I think if you look at it from an economic point of view, the good news is, we're generating a lot of that revenue from outside of Portsmouth. So, 22% of it's coming from Virginia Beach, 12% is coming from Chesapeake, and it pretty much is reflective of the entire community, which we look at ourselves as being an addition to a welcome center for Portsmouth. There's a lot of people who have their first or only experience is at the Portsmouth Pavilion, and we want to be the welcoming center so they have a great experience while they're at the Pavilion. This is a rundown of our schedule. What we were asked years ago to do was to try to do, try to use the facility as much as possible. Don't just focus on concerts. Concerts are our number one priority, but go beyond that. So, we started movies in May, which is a free program. Dominion Energy helped us sponsor it, and we do movies on Saturday nights in May when we don't have a concert. We also started, and we're going to continue the tradition, of doing a Mother's Day show. Last year, Temptations and Four Tops continued to put on a great show. We can debate how many real Temptations are there, how many real TOPS are left, but it was a great show either way. Car shows have really, there's been a need that we've seen where people wanted the proper assembly of car shows versus just being in random parking lots, and we've used some off weekend dates to do. This year, we did a spring car show, a fall car show, and then we tried something different with a truck show for the truck enthusiasts. We also are where Ymoja Festival headline stage, Elizabeth River Run, we host the beginning and end of the run. As Lavoris asked me when presenting for this, it's a coincidence, what my highlight was, it was getting Lionel Richie. And we were among one of the few venues that he played as he was tuning up for the Mariah Carey Lionel Richie tour. They were looking for places to play. I have a good relationship with management. They came to us and asked us if we would do the Lionel Richie date, and of course, it wasn't free, but we worked out good terms. We actually embedded this commercial in here, but I don't think it's, I don't think I'm going to be able to show it. But it was the television commercial that ran for Lionel Richie, played all the hits, and also, of course, featured Portsmouth Pavilion. Continuation of the season, July Jazz, another event that Lavoris strongly recommended we continue to hold. We're trying to find our place because Hampton has a jazz festival, Norfolk has a jazz festival, and we're trying to figure exactly where our model's going to fit in. We tried a model where we charged for what we called VIP tickets. Everything else was free, gave a great opportunity for those to come in, for anyone to come in just to experience the Pavilion at no charge. Craft Beer Wine Festival, for those that attended, another outside the box event that was a huge success, and we had very good weather this year. Partnership with the city, and the city did a fantastic job of doing the trunk and treat, great reviews. I heard a lot of feedback on that event, and it's just, it's great to use a facility in that sort of way. And then we rounded out the season with the Fleet Forces Band Concert and Celebration of the Shipyard, and hopefully everyone was able to attend that. That's probably one of the latest seated events we have ever done, and there does seem to be a scene, where I used to say, you can't go past mid-October for events. There is something happening with the weather, and season is going longer. This slide here is important. So, what we're doing here, as everyone knows, is we are working on finding a name and title sponsor for the Pavilion. For many years, when I started, we retained Intelos. Intelos was with us until two years ago, and they're a wonderful regional wireless company that decided to sell off their assets and leave the Hampton Roads market. So, we did an analysis to see how many times Portsmouth Pavilion was mentioned, how many impressions we gave to someone who would want to sponsor it. It was 247,900,000 mentions that we put out there through the media, through social media, through just interaction. So, if someone was going to come on and be our name and title, that's what they would expect. What's happening now, we have Portsmouth Pavilion as a name and title, and I think we're putting out about 248 million positive impression, impressions about the City of Portsmouth. Sponsors that we do have, and we refer to the name and title sponsor, and I say it quickly, but it's name and title, which becomes the name of the venue. But other sponsors we have throughout, throughout the year are listed here, and these are people that we work with and have worked with for many years on lower level sponsorships. Venue upgrades. We're constantly looking at the venue. It's entering year 17, I believe. So, it's either a 17 or 18-year-old facility. Part of the backstage was built with modular units. You're familiar with those from other uses around the city. So, it's time, it continues to be time to keep up on maintenance. Some of it had been deferred in the past, but over the last two or three years, we've caught up on deferred maintenance and have actually been able to move things forward. There's 1,000 folding chairs that go into the front, so 1,000 folding chairs were purchased prior to the season. They are a concert-grade folding chair. They're around $135 a copy. Don't hold me to that number. That's a top-of-head number, but it'll give you an idea of the type of expense you have to go to when you've got 1,000 folding chairs. We did the backstage, dressing rooms, hallways, catering area, and that's what our artists see. So, when I was actually lucky enough to go back and say hello to Lionel Richie, I did get positive comments from him on what a nice place it was and what a nice experience. And that's the word that gets to his agency, gets to his manager, and gets us more shows. So, in summary, we have this nice nighttime shot of the Portsmouth Pavilion showing the video screens and a nice full crowd there. So, looking forward to 2018. As we sit here in November, we are in the process now talking to agents, talking to managers, putting out offers, and we work in a highly competitive market. So, I'm competing with Atlanta, DC, Greensboro, Charlotte, Raleigh, the rest of the country to lure artists to come to Hampton Roads. And so, now is where the business part comes in, where we're putting out our offers, and usually what that means is offers money. So, wherever we, whoever can offer the most money, generally speaking, are the ones that end up getting the show. Routing is very important as well, and there are more and more facilities being built, even in Hampton Roads, it's becoming highly competitive, but we continue to believe we're going to continue to put on very good shows. We're also feeling some of the things that held us a little bit slower, tolls, tunnels, just the general market, we're seeing improvements. And I think some of, what we sell is something no one really has to buy. They want to buy it, and I think we're looking, looking good for the future because some of those dollars are freeing up for entertainment. So, thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Moody, how are you, sir?
When a, when a group or entertainer is going to come to the region, and I take it that you would reach out to them through past relationships, what's the determining factor of putting them at the Pavilion or putting them at the Ted Constance Center?
Well, it's kind of, it is a two-way street. So, there's major agencies that reach out to us, and we reach out to them and stay in constant contact. Who's touring? Who's going out? What are we hearing? Who's playing? So, when they, we hear about a tour where they're soliciting offers, we're going to put an offer in. The good news is, the summer is a busy time, and they want to be outdoors for the most part in the summer. So, there's, if they're touring in the fall, like we traditionally did ZZ Top, but ZZ Top, whose tour was postponed, and the TED has lots of postponements lately, but they wanted to play in November, we're not available in November. But had they waited, and we encourage them to wait and come back and play during the summer, but they, they're a business as well, and they needed to fill it. So, with our capacity, and you're right to pick on the TED because that's a similar capacity. Virginia Beach Amphitheater is a maximum capacity of 20,000. We're a maximum capacity of 7,000. There's some bands that can play either or, but it's pretty much the capacity that determines where they're going to play. Because if they can come in and sell out our building, they could go into Virginia Beach and look at 13,000 empty seats, and that's not much fun for an artist.
Now, what drives the attendance, other than obviously Lionel Richie is going to be a hot pack? But how does marketing play into that?
Well, one thing about us, every show is different. So, if we're marketing Travis Scott, Revolution, Lionel Richie, they're all unique audiences. And it used to be a lot easier to reach people because they got their information from the newspaper or traditional media. Now, they can be scattered all over the place. So, that's why we have to get better at digital media, social media, and spreading our budget throughout. So, we'll look at every show, we'll create a marketing campaign for each and every show, and then we'll try to work alongside the artists and also get them to engage with their fan base on how to sell tickets here. But ticket prices, of course, matter. I know that lower ticket prices usually sell more tickets, but sometimes in order to pay what the artists are required, we have to have higher ticket prices. And we're seeing there are certain people that will pay whatever they need to pay to be in front, and there are certain people that just want the lawn experience or the back, and they'll pay whatever. And now, we have discounting opportunities through Groupon and other digital outlets where it's not our favorite thing to do, but once in a while, we'll kick in Groupons and offer discounts to people.
Very good.
How does, like, radio comps, different radio stations, which are not here in Portsmouth, a lot of them, when they offer tickets to viewers or listeners, on the pie shop chart that you showed, the ticket sales were lower in Portsmouth than Norfolk and Virginia Beach? So, how do those ticket sales weigh into the number of persons who are purchasing from Portsmouth or Norfolk?
Well, I think all you're saying is, is there's more people that live in Virginia Beach. There's more people that live in Norfolk. And so, what we're doing is, it's, we're, we're not, you know, we're Portsmouth venue, but we're a Virginia venue, we're a Hampton Roads venue. So, the good news is, we're seeing, we're seeing the flexibility of movement of folks. It's not restricting people from outside the city to come into the city. Essentially, how radio station giveaways work is you trade. You basically say, okay, for, for $5,000 worth of advertising, I'll give you $2,500 in cash and $2,500 worth of tickets, and they use those promotional tickets to give away, either on the air, or it stops, or however they, they choose to give them away. We want them to give them away on the air. But because the stations are, you know, their signals are reaching throughout the region, it's not, it's just purely reflective of the market.
Yeah. One more question. What's the net revenue minus our debt service on the Pavilion?
I would note that right off, Mr. --
That'd be good for us to --
We will get that in figures to you.
Yeah.
Okay. Probably make and get it for the night's over.
Yes, sir.
How are you capturing the demographic data?
The demographic data I shared with you came from ticket buyers who bought their tickets through a credit card. So, if you use a, so if you're a cash buyer, I don't have your information. But if you bought your ticket online, or at an outlet, or through the box office with a credit card, we get it through the credit card companies.
So --
The credit card companies give it to the ticketing company, the ticketing company gives it to us.
Okay. So, that's assuming the people who are purchasing it are the people who are attending.
Correct. And that's not always the case. So, as I mentioned, that information would be skewed. So, if Travis Scott was a younger audience, if the parents bought the tickets, I'm, I know the parent, I don't necessarily know the younger person who came to the show. So, it does get, we do have to adjust for that.
Do you know, I think I saw, it was something like 89,000 that attended this year?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know of that 89,000, what percentage of that you're capturing demographics on?
That's a great question, and I don't know that number. I'd have to look that up for you. I don't know it offhand. But what I can tell you is credit card sales continue to go up every year, and cash sales go down every year. And what's going to happen eventually, I think this year or next year, we will no longer probably have, the ticket that we used to always get will probably no long, will cease to exist at some point, and that ticket will be on your phone. It is now. We can, you can bring your phone, and we can scan it at the entrance, and it, the way the ticket gets transferred and some of the things about ticketing, now our ticketing partner can also, just announced today, they have a partnership with YouTube, and we're getting to the point where if a person goes to YouTube, sees a Lionel Richie song, they'll find out that he's coming to town, and they'll have the ability to buy the ticket right away. So, the ticketing technology is completely, it's moving at warp speed, and that's why we use a ticketing partner, Ticketmaster, the largest ticketing company in the country, to take advantage of their technology.
To follow up on Dr. Whitaker's question, do you sell more credit card tickets than cash?
Oh, yeah. Cash is almost, is a very small amount right now. Almost everything is credit cards. People just want to be able to buy it when they want, where they want. What we're also seeing now is people that have the Ticketmaster app. They can just go to the app and buy the ticket. They don't even have to go online and go through registering. We're trying to make it as, as simple for them to buy the ticket as possible.
So, with that, you capture the demographic data?
Of the, of the credit card holder. Yes. And so, if you bought the ticket, the tickets and brought three friends, I know you, I don't know the three friends. And we could go further, and we will, with, with surveying and things, but really, we like when someone buys a ticket, they're coming for us to leave them alone and not bother them too much. So, we try to, we try to passively get information versus approach them with too many surveys and things like that.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
And now, we'll have Mrs. Willis from the Hampton Roads Community Health Center.
I don't know about you, but I feel old after hearing about the tickets and no more cash and all this kind of stuff. I mean, these times, they are changing. My name is Barbara Willis, and I represent Hampton Roads Community Health Center located at 664 Lincoln Street here in Portsmouth, Virginia. Thank you, City Manager and Mr. Mayor, for this opportunity to come before you and to really give you an update about what's happening with our Health Center and our partnership with, with the City of Portsmouth. Here in the audience with me are some of my, my staff and friends. Mr. Michel Bellet, he's the Chief Financial Officer. Janine McDougall is my Marketing Director. We also, we also have with us Maisha Kirby, who's an executive assistant, and a good friend, Mr. Willie Yates, is also here with us as a business partner. Just wanted to briefly, again, just to update you about what's going on at the center. Let me start off by laying a foundation with our mission statement. Hampton Roads Community Health Center's mission is to be fiscally sound, safety net provider of primary healthcare services to individuals and families. Through compassionate providers and staff, Hampton Roads Community Health Center will administer high-quality care that is reasonably priced and value-based in our medically underserved Our service area includes not only the City of Portsmouth, but all of Southampton Roads. We have individuals who come, we have sites in Portsmouth and Norfolk, but we have individuals that come to us from Chesapeake, from Virginia Beach, as well as from Suffolk. In 2016, this is our published data, we saw 12,800 patients in total. Of that number, 24% of them were Medicaid, 9% are dual-eligible Medicaid/Medicare, 16% are private insurance like Anthem, Blue Cross, Bushill. We have 466 homeless individuals that come to us and receive services, and the big bulk of our patient population are those individuals who are uninsured, and that was about 48% of our total patient base. So, we are a safety net for the City of Portsmouth as well as in the surrounding areas. We do a number of activities. For example, in the city, we have a partnership with the City, Portsmouth City School, Public School System, where we have a mobile van that goes to the school and serves our, the children on-site. This helps them to be able to stay in school and minimize parents having to leave to take their child out to see the dentist. Dental care or healthcare is very, very important in our communities. How many children are not able to concentrate in school because of oral health issues, usually tooth decay or things like that? And so, by our being able to bring this service to the, to the children in Portsmouth, this past school year, we saw 354 Portsmouth children and performed 2,615 procedures. So, in other words, our dental vans are not going out there to do the quick screening and then bill for Medicaid and go on their way. They're actually providing services to the children, and if there is a problem that can't be solved on the dental van, they have access to come to our, to our site on Lincoln Street. We figured that the service that we are offering at no cost to the children is valued, this past season was about $150,000 delivered in care to children with no out-of-pocket expense to their parents. A lot of times what we find, particularly in this environment now where we're talking about the Affordable Healthcare Act and things like that, are we still have a number of individuals who cannot afford to pay for their health insurance. And so, as I mentioned, we are a safety net for a number of families. We do accept folks through the Affordable Care Act program. We accept Medicaid, Medicare, Famous, Famous Plus, Emergency Medicaid, particularly for pregnant women. Most major insurances are accepted by us. We do have a sliding fee scale because we're not a free clinic. With the funds that we receive, we are obligated to ask for something, and so, we do have a sliding fee scale. And so we do have a sliding fee scale and where individuals can be paying as little as $25 based upon their income below, being below 200% of the federal poverty level. And they could be receiving between $300 and $400 worth of services. We do have individuals who can assist folks in terms of identifying what services they can, they would, might qualify for. Our team is a group of individuals who are compassionate, trustworthy, knowledgeable, and visible in the community. We offer pediatrics, OB-GYN, family practice, internal medicine, behavioral health service. We have full dental service along with dental hygienists. We have nurse practitioners, as I mentioned, behavioral health consultants, and we are a fairly qualified community health center. The economic impact to the city of Portsmouth and Norfolk where we serve is that we have an $8.2 million budget. A third of that budget actually is from the federal funds and the other remaining, two-thirds comes from our being able to bill for services because our providers are all board-certified or board-eligible. And so as a result of that, we can bill for services. And then we have another third that comes from our being able to apply for grants through other sources. We have created about 85 jobs, of which 42 of them are actually in the city of Portsmouth. We have 20 employees that we know are residents of Portsmouth, and we have a stimulated additional economic activity of about $7.5 million. We try to be, as I mentioned, be very visible in the community. We, we conduct health fairs as well as participate in health fairs and other activities. Our providers do the, on the public channel for Portsmouth. Our providers each take turns to do health education sessions that run typically for about six to eight weeks through the public TV station here in Portsmouth. And we have a bright future ahead of us. We've been in the, in the existing building where we are now since the center opened in May of 1995. And finally, as a result of funding and support from the city of Portsmouth, we've been able to partner with Mr. Willie Yates and his team and are looking forward to building a new facility on High Street. We're expecting it to be a 20,000-square-foot facility, two-story building that will have the clinical activity on the main floor and the administrative support offices on the second floor. So we're very excited about this. We have signed a letter of intent to proceed with the, with the building process. Any questions?
Questions? Yes, sir.
Just curious, where on High Street will the new building be?
It will be cat-a-corner from, down from, across the street from IC Norcom, the open land there, and on the other side of where the Department of Health and Human Services is currently. The key for the success of a community health center is to have the right mix of payers. We can't rely just on folks that do not have insurance paying out of pocket. And so by being able to be more visibly located on a main traffic area where our expectation is that we will be able to attract all individuals for services. It's a well-kept secret in terms of the quality of care that's being delivered at our health center. We were just recently awarded Level III recognition through the National Committee on Quality Insurance. That's the highest level of recognition that is given, and that will allow us to apply for higher reimbursement with our third-party insurance plans. We also have been joint-commissioned accredited since 1999 in the, at our center. We're fully electronic health record system for both medical and dental side. So you have a really great professional healthcare delivery system right where it is most needed in the heart of Portsmouth, and we're more than happy to serve.
You don't need, or do you need, a certificate of public need for this?
No, we do not. And the reason that we don't is because we're not, one, we're not a hospital. We're outpatient primary care delivery system. We're not doing emergency care or acute care. That is still being directed to the, to the hospitals or other appropriate facilities. What we do provide is comprehensive primary healthcare services. What does that mean? That means that we're treating those individuals that have diabetes, hypertension, high cholesterol, that are asthmatic. Our providers are very comfortable with treating individuals who have multiple chronic conditions because typically, one condition leads to another. And so that's what we're trying to do, is to work with the patient population and provide with them, provide preventive services, but also wanting the patient to be engaged in, in terms of their healthcare as well.
Yes, sir. On the mobile dental lab, is there parental permission that has to be gained prior to the lab going to a school?
Well, what we do, as I mentioned, we partner with the Portsmouth Public School System as well as with the Norfolk School System. And what we have an agreement with them as to when we will come to the school sites as well as with the principals. Let me not exclude them because we actually go to each school and talk directly with the principal or the parent navigator for that school system or the nurse and work out a schedule that will be convenient for them. The key for us is not to disrupt the flow of the school day. And so with, with that, and we also get permission from the parents before we would even touch a child or treat a child. And if the parent wants to be on the mobile unit at the time that their child is being seen, we have no problem with that. So we work out that relationship initially upfront with the school so that they are, the school superintendent, so that they're comfortable with our being there. And then we work with the individual school principal, through the school principals.
Are there any income levels involved or qualifiers?
Not at all.
So any child?
Any child could be seen. If the child does have Medicaid, we will bill for Medicaid. But other than that, or if they have, you know, commercial coverage like Delta Dental or something like that, we will bill for that. But other than that, if the child does not have insurance, we do not turn the child away.
Okay. Very good.
I have a question. You mentioned that you're not a hospital, but are there any similarities with them being affiliated with like a patient first or a docs in a box? Are there any similarities with this health center and those kind of facilities?
Well, we don't have like x-ray machines on-site. We don't have those kinds of units that would require a certificate of need. Again, ours is more the direct delivery of the base level of primary care for, a lot of times for chronic conditions. Folks, if you need a flu shot, as a matter of fact, our center is providing free flu shots. So please get them because there's something going on now and it's taking folks out, but we're offering that to the community as well at this, at this point. And that's the other reason why we brought these for each one of you, so that you will be sure to remember to wash your hands, wash your hands.
It's an opportunity to tell the public the hours for the flu shot.
They can come, our, our health centers are open typically from 8:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. They're also open at the Portsmouth site the second Saturday of, of every month.
And you would take a walk-in for a flu shot?
We will take, we love to take walk-ins. But the thing about it, even taking with walk-ins, again, as a community health center, we're more like a private practice, group practice in that the individuals are able to establish a relationship with that provider. So say, for example, if the doctor goes on vacation, just like you or I, I might get a call, you would be informed of that to know that your doctor is not available, but if you need to be seen, there are options for you. But for the most part, it's you and your provider that you will have the relationship with.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So, so if I heard correctly, there's no income limitation on who can use the facilities?
Not at all.
And I think that's been a sort of type of stigma on it that is limited to certain income levels. And so really, the issue is providing access.
Access to care in a medically underserved area.
Right.
And how is that determined? Based upon the number of providers that are in the community that will see the different types of individuals? What we find is that, for example, Medicare, if you did not already have an established relationship with the doctor before you turned 65, it's pretty hard for you to get to see other private practice doctors because they're just not accepting new patients in that area. But we will see Medicare patients as well as, as I mentioned before, Medicaid. We have a number, I think about 14% of our patient base are commercial, where we see Tricare, we see Anthem, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and of course, Optima.
You have a board, correct?
I do.
A board of directors?
A board, yes. With, with us as a community health center, we're a little unique for a lot of different boards. And from the standpoint that our board is actually comprised of 51% actual users of the services. So our patients have the opportunity to be part of the governance for the community health center. They sit in and they learn about the policies. They are, they review our financials every month to help, to make sure that we maintain fiscal soundness with our health center. And they also review our grants as we, you know, when we apply for different services.
And is there a timeline for the new center to come on board?
I think 20, we would hope to be in by, by, no, later than 2020. We'd like to really see some action going by the first quarter of 2018 to assure that happening. So we will definitely keep you posted on that, and we're really excited. I think this will be a, a great thing for the city to have this type of safety net being erected with state-of-the-art equipment and, of course, as I mentioned, excellent providers.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I think the question that Dr. Whitaker asked was one that when the director came in to meet with me, trying, one of their goals is to try to dismiss the myth that only persons who are at a certain income are to use the Hampton Roads Health Center. And in just looking at some information she left, the doctors that are at our health center are some of the top in the region. And she has stressed that. And highly certified. So coming to High Street when they come and the advertisement, which they are beginning to do now, should really encourage many of us to utilize the Hampton Roads Health Center.
Exactly. That was the reason why Ms. Janine has been hired. And if Janine, Janine, as I mentioned, was our Marketing Director, and so if Janine would just share her background with everyone, I'd appreciate it.
Would you come to the lecture?
Absolutely.
Good evening.
I'm very excited to be here. Just a brief intro, I am from a hospitality background in marketing. And just to recap, my name is Janine McDougald. I attended Christopher Newport University for Communications, and then I also got my degree, my master's in international hospitality. And I've been in marketing for about 15 years as far as, yes, I've been in hospitality for a very long time. So some of which was with Chick-fil-A. I was the Marketing Director in a few locations, and then I was also the digital marketing and hotel sales manager at Colonial Williamsburg. So I bring forth a lot of wisdom as far as marketing. I'm trying to get a new focus as far as Hampton Roads Community Health Center and how we are currently branded and working on a rebrand, just so that it is including everyone, including the insured and, like you were saying, as far as patients who were not aware that we accept everyone. So that's been my main focus as far as them bringing me on and having that new rebranding image. So.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Just curious, is it, will this have an urgent care facility?
Not so much urgent care as care now. Meaning that we are focusing on, we have, we've undertaken a project where we're focusing on having patients be able to come in and be out within 40 minutes or less. So we're calling that care now.
That's a new concept.
Thank you so much for what you do.
I appreciate it.
Means a lot to our community, and thank you for the presentation tonight. It's very informative. And again, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I pass these out?
Yes.
That won't disrupt?
No. No.
I'll take a brief take.
Just don't want you to forget them.
Thank you.
You can leave some of the slides as well.
I just ordered some.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you.
I'm carried home for very long time. You're welcome. Did I hear it again? Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right.
Watch pad.
Yes, Mayor, at this time, I will go over, go over the City Manager's report during tonight's City Council meeting. We have eight ordinances that will be coming before council. The first is an adoption of an ordinance accepting $248,175.57 of Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program income of $5,850 of Home Investment Partnership Program income and appropriating the said amounts in the FY2018 Community Planning and Development Program Fund. To just explain that simple, Wendy, that is actually beginning to be built on London Boulevard, the property of which Wendy's has purchased through PRHA was CDBG land and with that, any CDBG monies that are used to purchase land, once the land is sold, a portion of that money has to come back to the city, go back through its coffers and goes back into the Community Planning and Development Program. So this will just be a process of the money going back to there, coming back to us, and will be designated for some project in 2019 with our home and CDBG funds. The next is an, is an adoption of an ordinance accepting the Brown Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $9,120 for the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said funds in the FY2018 Grants Fund for the use of the Portsmouth Police Department for the Narco-Lan program to combat opioid addiction. The third is an adoption of an ordinance accepting the State Homeland Security to Grant Program Funds in the amount of $25,200 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating the said funds in the FY2018 Grants Fund for the use by the Portsmouth Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services for the South Side Regional Hazardous Materials Response Team. The fourth is an adoption of an ordinance accepting a hazmat team equipment exercise and training grant in the amount of $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said funds in the FY2018 Grants Fund for the use by the Portsmouth Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services for the South Side Regional Hazardous Materials Response Team. The fourth is an adoption of an ordinance accepting a hazmat team equipment exercise and training grant in the amount of $30,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said funds in the FY2018 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire Rescue and Emergency Services Hazardous Material Emergency Response Team. And this South Side Regional Hazardous Materials Response Team is comprised of four jurisdictions, which is Portsmouth, Chesapeake, Norfolk, and Virginia Beach, but we serve as the host city for that. The next is an adoption of an ordinance supporting the application for four items that are going to go forward in a grant request to the Virginia Department of Transportation. The first is adoption of an ordinance and an application to the VDOT Revenue Sharing Program or the Ballot Avenue and Hyman Street Improvement Project. And resolutions have to go with these applications, so that is why they are coming forward. The next is adoption of a resolution supporting an application to the Virginia Department of Transportation for the allocation of $1,225,000 through VDOT Revenue Sharing Program for FY2019 through 2020 for the Burton's Point Road Reconstruction Project. The third of that group is an The third of that group is an adoption of a resolution supporting an application to the Virginia Department of Transportation for the allocation of $250,000 through the VDOT Revenue Sharing Program for FY 2019 through 2020 for the Effingham Street Improvements at the Portsmouth Naval Medical Center Project. And the last is an adoption of a resolution supporting the, an application to the Virginia Department of Transportation for funding application of $2 million for the year 2019, and $2,500,000 for the year 2020 through the VDOT Revenue Sharing Program for the Paradise Creek Bridge Replacement Project. These are grants that we're going for. Resolutions have to be in place for us to even apply, and it will be based on whether or not we are awarded these grants, that these monies would come in for the project. In addition, the state is changing the way or the amount, and the amount that a city can receive in the context of a year for projects. And right now, the total going forward, I think, starting in 20, is it 2019? 2019 will be $10 million total. So if we're going-
Per year?
A year.
This is in state money?
This is state, all of this is state money, Virginia Department of Transportation. Okay, so that formula is changing effective 2019. So we're getting these in so that hopefully we can get the grants for them. There are two-
Before you leave, let's make sure, any questions on these ordinances? Well, you've refreshed our memory on 493. What's the estimated cost, total cost of the bridge replacement on Paradise?
I would ask Mr. Wright to speak to that.
Eight point six million.
And we have how much already?
We have $500,000 for design.
Okay.
Okay.
Questions?
And that's Paradise Creek. All right. I'd like to, I sent members of council your email yesterday, just to call your attention to, there has been some inquiry as it pertains to our recycling temporary process with our contract that we had with RDS. As you are aware, last August, RDS informed the city that it did not want to renew its contract with the city that expired November 4th on 2017. Upon that notice, the city's procurement office publicly solicited bids for the services that RDS had been providing. Those bids are under review, and the city's procurement officer is reviewing those bids. While the bid evaluation is underway, the city is sending the waste that RDS was handling to Willabretta instead of sending it to the Suffolk landfill. The decision to take recyclables to Willabretta was made based on the reuse of recyclables to energy, then taking it to a landfill for recyclables, and that would have been in Suffolk. Again, this is only temporary, and measures to provide uninterrupted service to all customers, and the pickup of recyclables in our city has not been, has not been interrupted at all, and the process that these materials in an environmentally friendly manner that's available to the city. Our contract with SIPSA provides two opportunities of where we could dispose, and that is the landfill in Suffolk and Willabretta, and we are taking it right now to Willabretta. I'm hoping to have a recommendation from the procurement officer as early as next week.
What's the disposal rate on that per ton?
It would be the same rate that we have right now with SIPSA, and that's 125. That would not change until once in 2019, January, that the new cost will come into effect. The second-
First of all, I thought it was problematic to find, to find out about this through the paper. That was my first hearing of this, and I don't know how accurately the paper has recorded the sentiments coming from you and the mayor, but I didn't think that the recycling program that was presented to the city, I didn't know burning the trash was part of recycling. I thought it was an environmental issue as far as why we were recycling. And the second issue, other than environmental, is the economic, because I thought that the reason we were recycling was to reduce the tonnage that was being sent to a Willabretta so that that fee, that the 125, wouldn't be inclusive of recyclable items. Now that it is including recyclable items, what is that additional cost now that the city is paying? And I know you wouldn't have that figure, but that would be something that-
Right, but this has just started. We've into, today is the, the day is the-
13th.
Today is the 14th. We've only been 10 days. We hopefully will get a recommendation by next week, or maybe by the end of the week. So over the, over the 10 days that we have been doing this, only temporarily, I will find out what that amount is, okay?
I guess the other thing was that, you know, knowing that RDS wasn't going to renew the contract, and I think the bids on finding replacement were finalized in September. Why in the world has it taken us so long to, to make a determination of who we're going to go with?
I cannot answer that September was the date or a time. I can only work with-
That's what was reported in the news, September.
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what, I didn't give a date in mind. I don't know where a date, but our procurement officer is working through the process, and I'm hoping to hear from Mr. Ammons with the recommendation, at least by next week. One of the things I have said, and I've said it this evening since I've been in here, as city manager, I do not get involved in the procurement process. I cannot tell you who those are that bid for this process. I will wait for Mr. Ammons to come forward and provide the information as procurement or purchasing agent.
I'm not so much interested in who they are as the timeline, because it does affect our bottom line, if you may.
Right. I would assure you, as soon as we can, and he makes the recommendation, we will move expeditionally. I'm not looking at months or not extended weeks. We're right now 10 days.
The question I thought is that, since you know that a contract is coming to an end, and that could expose the city to additional costs, why is it that there was not a smooth transition from the ending of the RDS contract to a new contract?
We have, we, when we started this process of developing the proposals or whatever to go out, it has been moving in a timely manner. It is, it is not a gap that we were not pursuing or doing. I do know that in the procurement process, the procurement officer has to go back and ask those whoever bid for more information, or I know there are interviews and things that have to be provided. So it's not something that is, just can say, we can do it in four weeks, and we'll get it done in three, or whatever. It's a process.
So we had already budgeted for the additional costs that would be this interim period that's already-
We would, we would have that money within, in, in the process of waste management, which is a enterprise.
My other concern is that, I thought that we were updated by Mr. McCoy and Attorney Cordell regarding the negotiations that's going on right now between SIPSA and Willabretta, and that's supposed to be for the municipal trash for Portsmouth.
Yes.
With that negotiations going on, is SIPSA aware that Portsmouth was doing a deal on its own with Willabretta for recyclables?
SIPSA, Portsmouth is not doing a deal on its own with Willabretta. Portsmouth is a part of SIPSA, and the two disposal avails to us through SIPSA is Suffolk and Willabretta. So we can't go out of SIPSA to do any deals.
What I'm saying is that the previous recyclable contract was not with SIPSA, that was with RDS.
That is correct.
So I'm asking is, was SIPSA aware that Portsmouth was negotiating with Willabretta to handle its recyclables? Because there had to have been, there had to have been some negotiations-
Portsmouth didn't have to negotiate because we are a member.
No, what I'm saying is, I thought that the agreement was that the municipal trash was going to Willabretta, not the recyclables. And so there had to have been some discussion for Portsmouth to allow its recyclables to come to Willabretta now. So we just, we just took our trucks over there unannounced and said, here is our recyclables.
I mean, I'm the only person at this table that was present at the creation in 1988 when SIPSA was created, and it was styled then as a re-
Hold on, let me just, no, no, what I'm saying, I was speaking to the city manager, and I was asking, but you're not the city manager, you're, you're a city council member. I was asking the question to the city manager, and I think that she is capable of answering the question without you speaking for her.
Thank you, sir.
You're a council of one. So can she finish making her statement?
I'll finish my comment.
No, I think the city manager, no, you're out of order because I was, she was addressing my question. So how are you going to cut her off as one council member? I think, I think she has the intelligence, she can think, you don't have to stop for her, and I think I'm correct on that. I don't see you talking over a city manager, and you're a council member. If another council member's asked a question, give us the respect and give her the respect of answering it.
Thank you, sir.
And so can, Dr. Patton, can you finish answering?
I will continue, Dr. Whitaker.
No, I, I don't need, I don't need you to, you can rule all you want. The council determines order, and I asked the city-
Do you want to deal to council?
I asked this, yes, yes. I asked the city manager a question. She should be given the dignity to answer the question without you cutting across her as if you were thanking for her.
The matter before council is whether or not Dr. Whitaker is out of order.
Yes, he is. The chairman has the power in this meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, if Dr. Patton was done, if there's no more comments.
Sure, I had to, I had to order to do it.
Okay, I'll, I'll continue. In 1988, SIPSA was formed to recycle garbage, not the landfill, not the incinerator. In the, in the business, an incinerator is a mass burn facility where you burn the garbage, and all you get is smoke and ash. The Willabretta facility is a power plant. We get billed by Willabretta for the tonnage that we take there. It doesn't make any difference what's in that tonnage, whether it's paper, glass, remnants of chicken, or steaks, or whatever. And so that is how we get billed, our tipping fee is the amount of garbage that rolls across the scales. But I think what's been misconstrued is that the city has been in the recycling business since 1988, for three decades. We're coming up on three decades that it's been in the recycling business. Our household waste has not gone to a landfill, and nor has it gone to a mass incinerator. It's been recycled into energy, and it provides energy to our largest employer, which is the shipyard, which happens to be the fourth largest employer in Hampton Roads. That energy is in the form of steam and electricity. The shipyard needs that energy. If it didn't have this recycled material, it would be using fossil fuels, which unquestionably has a finite amount and a very detrimental impact on, on the environment. I'm sad to say that this morning's article didn't help explain the situation. It implied that we take it to a mass incinerator, which we don't. It's a power plant, the trash is recycled. It was being recycled before the city instituted the separation of plastic and paper and metal, and it's still being recycled. And Dr. Whitaker, you are correct, that one of the motivations was that, was that to reduce the amount that was going to SIPSA so that we would reduce the size of the bill. That bill is going to come down anyway, as we all well know, when 2018 comes and the new contract is in place.
Yes, sir.
Can, can you answer a question that I asked? The question I asked was, the fact that we are in negotiations now between SIPSA and Willabretta, was Willabretta aware that we were, well, was SIPSA aware that we were now negotiating bringing recyclables to Willabretta? Was SIPSA aware of that?
We did not negotiate, Dr. Whitaker. We are a part of SIPSA. We can take our recyclables by deciding they can go either to the landfill. There is nothing special that the city had to do with SIPSA.
Okay, so that's, that was my question. So, so the city's recyclable trucks can just show up at Willabretta any day-
Our trucks.
-without any pre-negotiation, discussion, and dump recyclables there?
We are part of the system.
All right. But the other side of it is that there's a cost-
Right, we are paying the same tonnage.
No, we're not, we're paying the same tonnage fee-
That's right.
-but we're not paying the same tonnage cost because you're dumping recyclables and municipal trash there, whereas before you were just dumping-
Or this temporary period, yes.
Right, and so there is a cost to, to that.
Yes, and you've asked how much at this time, I will, will let you know, based on the tonnage.
I'm, I'm just concerned because it would seem like if those discussions have not been finalized, I'm just curious, is that going to have any impact on the negotiations between SIPSA and Willabretta now that we're doing this?
No, 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 two different things. My second item, on last night, members of council, you approved for retirement, retirement supplements. I am back to share as, just a reminder, the city's retirement system administrator for payroll is John Hancock, and we have had our finance team to reach out to him this morning. John Hancock has indicated that it needs at least 30-day notice prior to issuing supplements to retirees, and the proposed supplement is for retirees with over 20 years of service. A check of the database will also be needed to verify that the current information is correct. The earliest possible time for a supplement can be completed is the January 1st, 2018 benefits check that the retirees will receive. And just a note, that this might be more beneficial to retirees for tax purposes as the supplement would be paid in calendar year 2018 versus 2017, as they are already receiving two supplements totaling $1,056 in 2017. So we are, we can move forward with the resolution coming forward at the next meeting, but we do not write or deliver the checks for the retirees. It goes through John Hancock, okay?
And the retiree gets a check from John Hancock?
That comes, all of their checks come from John Hancock, not the city of Portsmouth, okay?
Everybody.
Okay. All right. The second and last thing, I sent out earlier today, Dr. Whitaker had asked in regard to information on what is the policy which we had not, what, what was the city's, or was there a policy or standard department policy as it pertains to fire, police, fire and emergency workers being required to remain on duty if the need arose? And the answer, which I have given back to you all, back to you in this document that you received earlier today, is no, there is not a policy that requires fire, rescue, or emergency personnel to work overtime if necessary. And the second was, there is not a policy, however, the standards department policy, number 1-1-7, which is the callback guidelines, were used on the weekend of October 1, and I attached actually what the policy is. The third was, in order to meet public safety needs of the city and honor budget concerns, the battalion chief on October 1, which was the date that the question was referenced, that was on duty, made a tactical decision, which is within his discretion, to not require staff to remain on duty on that said date. Using the scheduling software entitled CruiseSense, personnel that were below the rank of captain were notified- of captain were notified, however, there were no responses, and however, no one responded to the notification. In light of this, a mandatory holdover policy is being developed for future implementation, but just talking with, um, our city attorney today and with our HR director. While we may have in, in, um, place policies that say that, um, people in certain positions can be held over or, or required, and the, uh, example was given is if it's a major hurricane and you want people to go. If they did, if an employee indicates that they cannot, or they choose not, then you, you can't make them, you can deal with it at some point, maybe with a, um, uh, some kind of supervisor raise memorandum or some disciplinary action, but that there is nothing mandatory that you can make people do. And, um, uh, the fourth one is, um, uh, have we done a staffing model to see if we are efficiently staffing the fire department? And the question, the answer to, um, the staffing model, no, a staffing model, we've, is, is not needed. The issue surrounds vacancies, and as I reported to you three weeks ago, how many vacancies we had. As of, um, November 27th, we'll be down to five civilian vacancies. Now, in that time, we may have someone to leave, and there's one vacancy here. Um, I'm also, I don't know if you all read it, but there is an article that just came out talking about cities and dealing with fire and police and the challenges of vacancies and filling them. Um, as I shared last night, we have hired 20 firefighter recruits who will report to work on November 20th. We have, we have rehired six former Portsmouth firefighters who will report to work on November 27, 2017. In addition, we have three former Portsmouth firefighters who will be offered positions once they are approved by the Civil Service Commission, and most of these firefighters are coming back from Suffolk. The nine rehires will be assigned to a station after a brief, one-week orientation, that's all they will have to have, and the fire department, uh, will have, and working toward five civilian positions right now. And the budget for the overtime, uh, for firefighters is $614,778, and the amount spent as of October 20th, mainly because of the vacancies, which these vacancies have been vacant for up to two years, some of them, um, is at 94%. But we did budget for, um, um, we have a mountain there for vacancies, which is automatic in there, um, so that's where we are right now with, um, the overtime figures.
Any questions? Do you have a question?
I want to go back to the, um, said you, said you gave, you did bonuses last night?
Uh, I just reported, yes, uh, retirement supplement, not bonus, supplement.
Supplement, okay, I thought we, we had discussed doing that, just talking about that with the next budget season.
I'll let council speak.
It's a unanimous decision last night.
Yeah, unanimous.
So, so was the, so how many employees, how much money is, well, you may not know all these answers.
Well, there's 638 employees at 331,000 dollars. Um, I will, just for, since you've asked the question, I, um, will call two councils' attention that this 2018 budget is one of which we looked to use vacancy savings to help with, um, the offset of costs as we built this 2018 budget, which we shared. Um, so the $331,000 would be pulling from the amount of which we have in there, that was, I'd say, cushioning for vacancy savings to help balance out our budget. But it was approved, and I'm reporting back that, uh, we cannot get the checks, we do not do the checks, but John Hancock has indicated they will not be able to process and get the checks in the benefits until January.
So how's that along with the, this is what, this is what the third one that we've done?
Yes.
So how's all that roll up for the long-term?
Well, we kind of presented that last night.
Oh, you did, okay.
But, um, Mr. Cherry, if you'd like for, um, myself and Mrs. Kelly to go over what we shared on last night, we can do that as early as your schedule will permit.
Okay.
All right.
Sir, I have a follow-up. Follow-up with the, uh, fire, there were three issues you raised, I just want to make sure I'm clear. Um, you, you said that there is no mandatory requirement for overtime. Um, the, if, if I remember correctly, uh, the fire union-
No, I, I said mandatory holdover. That's what I said, not mand, I didn't say over.
Holdover, right, right, someone staying over from their previous shift.
Right.
If I remember correctly, I thought that the firefighters, through Facebook and other media, raised, uh, an alarm that there was understaffing on that day. I thought that's what, that's, that's what was reported.
They, they may have raised that, Dr. Whitaker, but as I shared, the battalion chief that made the decision, um, and he had the authority to make the decision, felt that he had with, um, I guess, the, the, um, far staffing that he had for that day, if there was some kind of emergency, he would have been able to have handled it, to handle it.
Okay, so, so holdover, no, overtime was needed for those nine positions that day?
We, we put out the call as we indicated for, starting with firefighters, lieutenants, I think, well, it's here, the one, we put out the call. There was a need, and, where he knew he had nine, so he put out the call for firefighters, lieutenants, and then paramedics. Those were through the, um, um, software system that is used, um, those persons in those slots were given an opportunity to respond. There were none that would, that respond, which, according to, um, our chief, that had not happened in his timeframe before. So it appears that there was some concerted effort, um, that all of those that they reached out to did not, and then the next thing, I guess, an hour or even before, there's something out in social media that-
So, so the, so the policy that you emailed to us today, um, the standard department policy, is, is that an administrative policy?
Yes.
Okay, so here, so here where it states, uh, under responsibilities, where it says the battalion chief and EMS clinical care coordinator under section 5.3 are responsible to work together to ensure daily staffing needs are met.
Right.
So, so therefore, if, if there's an opening in their positions that, uh, have not been filled through call-ins, that battalion chief doesn't have the right to make sure that those needs are met through a holdover or, or, um, some other method to ensure that the city is not exposed?
I will go, um, one step further, and, um, in, uh, speaking with Chief Hoffler today, um, he indicated that, um, the battalion chief had the, the authority to do it. However, when he returned and he met with the battalion chief, he called to the battalion's chiefs, you had the authority to do that, however, in the future, he would not, um, recommend that it been, that be done. And he indicated that the battalion chief and all of the, the administrative group knew that they were, um, and they had talked about their overtime and how they were working to try to reduce the overtime. So that battalion chief made that call, but the chief did get back with him to let him know that while we talked about, uh, the overtime piece and the cost, I would not recommend that you make that kind of decision again.
Okay, so those, those nine positions that were left open, then, there was adequate staff, and the city was not exposed at any time during that time period?
No, sir, it was not.
So, so the next question then, I asked about the staffing modeling.
Right.
And, and you stated that there's no need for a staffing modeling.
I said, and that is based on working with both, um, our HR director and-
I know, I'm just saying the conclusion was that there's no need for a staffing model.
Right, that's right, that we have.
So how do we as council, when, when you come presenting a budget, saying that we need this level number of firefighters, police, how are we rationally making that decision if we have not done any type of analysis of whether we're efficiently staffing our departments? I mean, are we just supposed to just pull numbers out the air and say, that's how many we need?
The complement of both fire and police was established by a process, um, at some point in municipal government. There is a, that's, you've got complement of 200 this or 200 that. That was, that is a, a, a model. In my tenure here as city manager, um, I have not, in two budgets, come back to, to, to do a study or whatever with fire police to say that those models are whatever.
I would, with our money being as tight as it is, I would, I would think council would want to know how we're making staffing decisions, particularly if you're saying you can have nine positions open and the city is adequately covered.
That was only, that was for, that, that was a call by the battalion chief.
Right, that's what, that's-
And that is not the norm, that's not the norm, so that, that, that one day, or that one call by the battalion chief does not, um, usurp that, the 200 and whatever firefighters that we have, or the 200 and whatever police that we have, is a model that does not work for the city.
I guess my question, as we move into the budget, how do we know whether we are efficiently staffing fire and police?
So we have professional chiefs for it?
No, no, that's why you do, that's why you have to do an analysis. You can't just pull out the top of your head what is needed.
Staffing concern, our concern's funding, money, not staff.
Right, right, we ought to, yeah, but we ought to be making wise funding, no, no, we ought to be making wise funding decisions.
When we talk about staffing-
That's right.
And, and, and want to ask her specifically-
It's no more different, it's no more different than when you raise issues with the school system about how many administrators and teachers.
Relate it to money.
So, that's what we're doing. We're saying, how do we know we should be spending this amount of money on staffing?
You're directing it to staff.
No, no.
All right, guys, ladies and gentlemen, we have a-
I think it's, I think it's a legitimate question. How do we know whether we're efficiently staffing our departments?
We hear your question, and I was asked the city manager to give us a report, whether or not we are adequately staffed, and what staff we need.
I share.
But see, this is, um, this is what I'm saying, that's not just a question that management just unilaterally answers, there, there ought to be a staffing modeling that is done.
We understand that, I mean, is there a way in the government?
Uh, so, so is council saying that we don't need a staffing model?
No. Is it a consensus of council to have, ask the city manager to give us analysis of, and it can be done inside, of the staffing needs of the fire department?
No, that's what the chiefs are for.
Yes, chiefs, manager of the fire department.
I don't think, that's an internal, that's not an internal decision that's made, that's-
That's, I know what the majority of council wants to do.
I'd be happy for the manager to come back to us with what the chiefs recommend.
If the manager, uh, is willing to do that, I'm for it.
Yes, I am, I think anything otherwise would be micromanaging, so.
Well, having done, done, done staffing standards for, for the military for years, you can't get a good, you can't get a good analysis of what you need from the people who, who are, who are in the, in the system. If you're gonna, if you're gonna do, if you're gonna do a staffing model, it need to be by somebody from, from outside who has staffing model capabilities. You can't, you, the chiefs can't, they can take what they need based on their experience, but, um, if, but to get a true staffing model done, they gotta be by somebody else. I, I, I did staffing models for, for the army for, in, in the Navy for, for years, and it's, it's outside people, outside, outside of them, because we know what we want, and what we want always factors into what we tell the people doing the study, what they need. So, Dr. Whitaker makes, makes a point that you, they can tell you based on their experience, but their, their experience is gonna be somewhat, um, influenced by what they also want because they're considering the job. So we, we need outside out to give the true stuff.
Thank you.
Um, well, basically, I have firsthand knowledge because I've done the job, and we have been understaffed for about two years, and they're filling the positions. There was a study done this past summer by the International Association of Firefighters that Dr. Patton has a copy of, as well as Chief Hoffler, that really saved the city a whole lot of money if we had had to pay for that study, and if you look at that study and read it, you would be surprised at how we're not covered. And that's even if we fill these vacancies that we have now, and that's not even taken into consideration the looking towards a new fire station that has historically been talked about going into Truckston. So these are filling positions that have been vacant for some time, and one of the piece that people don't realize is 1996 is when the fire department took over the ambulances from Tidewater Ambulance Service. It started with two and a half ambulances, two were 24 hours, one was 12. So that was three firefighters that were taken off a fire engine to drive that ambulance. Now we're up to five and looking at six. So every day to run those ambulances, each one that's operating that ambulance is a firefighter that's not riding on a fire engine, and they have not increased staff to fix that, so we're still filling those holes. So I'm comfortable with Dr. Patton and getting information from Chief Hoffler to provide us what his needs are for his department.
You, 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 you four firefighters, right?
Yes, sir.
You retired firefighters, right?
Yes.
Guys, we're trying to find out what the consensus, and we have a majority of council that says to the city manager, bring back, uh, an analysis of what our needs are.
Mayor, I would like to say, and I think council may, may not have remembered, we're working with one of the top fire and police consultants in the nation who is, who has helped us in the model of the recruitment, and that's Dr. Morris, who is working with us.
And I think that's all that, that, Dr. Whitaker, and I'm saying, someone, other, other than the people who are sitting in there, see, see, he's a retired firefighter, he, 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 his, his opinion is, is great based on his experience.
Right.
But he's not gonna take the look as a person come from an outsider says, this is what you really need, because he's gonna be influenced by faces. Outside agents just can come and look at spaces.
Right.
Regardless of who it is, my buddy, my friend, my cousin, they're just looking at what, what the needs is, and, and, and working with a consultant would do that, but, but, but that's what you need, somebody from the outside.
Right, we have it.
You can't, you can't just, uh, Dr. Whitaker makes a good point, you, you can't get it from, from just the people who, who retired from there, who worked, who worked there, because the opinion is gonna be, gonna be based on what they know and what they like from having been there. I mean, that's, that's-
Isn't that what the IFF is?
Well, that was, that I, the, the study that I was referring to was not done locally. It came from Washington DC International Association of Firefighters, so that was an outside look at the staffing needs in our city. It was not done by any of our police.
All right, we, we got the direction.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, this-
Excuse me, I did have a third question, and it still relates to the fire department. Vice Mayor Cherry asked at our last meeting, um, about the overtime pay, and he asked for, I thought a comparison of what we were paying last year this time and where we are this year. I thought it was a comparison that he asked. I saw, I saw the figure in here, but the figure was just based on this year.
Okay.
And I think it was a 94%.
Right, I would, I would have to get next, last year's and this one, I didn't do the comparison, I could, I'll get that to you by tomorrow, okay?
Everybody got their question in?
Yes.
Okay, we're ready for a motion to go into closed session, or did you have another?
No, I'm finished, that's what I'm saying, I'm finished.
If you go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-371181, the purpose of discussing the appointment of specific public officers, specifically regarding the contract between the city and the city assessor, and pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-37183, the purpose of discussing the disposition of publicly held real property where the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically regarding the after green development 4300 George Washington Highway and 0 George Washington Highway Tax Parcel 0461-00800000 01000110, and pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-371183, for the purpose of discussing the acquisition of real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically regarding the northeast corner of the intersection of Washington Street and County Street.
Okay, before we consider the motion, the chair recognizes Bill, and I'm gonna anticipate that you want to bifurcate the motions, so that you-
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh-
We make that as amendment to the motion?
Yeah, yes.
That we, we take these, uh, one at a time, we'll do a motion to do the assessor first, and I assume that you're concerned about conflict.
There would be no assessing.
Yeah, there is no conflict, but I don't want it to be an appearance of such.
Well, let's, if you're, if everybody's willing, let's have one motion to go into closed session for-
The city assessor.
Right.
As I previously stated, for the city assessor.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clark, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Semus?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
Lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard discussed or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Madam Clark, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Semus?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes, and we're out of this meeting, we're adjourned, we'll reconvene at 7:00.